Was you worried?
Sorry.
Stuck in that mess on three sixty five.
Yeah.
The wreck.
It's wrecked.
No.
Everybody goes through the highway.
Test on two.
Drives twenty mile an hour.
Yeah.
I gotta get out, cause the car was stuck.
Yeah.
And I went back to the back streets.
Yeah, he took me white sulfur.
Huh?
He took me white sulfur.
Oh, it was all backed up, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Is that the red line again?
Huh?
Is that the red line again?
No, it's in between Kubota.
Really?
Right there.
Sure.
We need Kubota buildings.
Oh. One thing was I just had to run to church and open church.
Cheer practice.
A lot of traffic coming up.
I'm like, it must be red.
My wife and I should go.
Okay.
Thank God.
Yeah, they don't even call us.
Must've been bad.
You should do it.
Okay.
Good.
Yeah.
See, they're looking at maybe should have come back to the last year, that's over fifty-eight percent.
Good.
Glad they're doing so.
I follow them.
Y'all ready? Let's be time to start. You ready, Wayne?
Ready.
Alright, we're gonna call a meeting to order tonight. Uh, we got a couple of, uh, public hearings. We're gonna let Mr. Holman's address. Uh, before we get into that, I think, uh, Frank has got a couple of things he wants to cover.
Yeah, just real quick, you got a couple of handouts, uh, outside the book. The one is membership in, um, American Planning Association. If you guys would just fill that information out for me, I'll get you guys registered and paid. Then the second one is an upcoming training session on October twenty-eighth through the twenty-ninth. So it's a two-day session up in, um, Young Harris at, uh, Briston Bold. Um, so if you'll go ahead and look at your calendars and let me know if I can schedule you for that conference to meet your training obligation, uh, your training schedule. The, and then we'll also go ahead and make you the hotel reservations at the same time. What I've attached or what you guys have is the agendas from the last two conferences they have. They change all the time, but, uh, just so you can see what kind of topics they talk about. But if you guys could get that to me either tonight or tomorrow, so I guess, so we can go ahead and get you guys taken care of. And that's all I had on those.
Do we have a motion to approve the agenda for tonight?
Motion approved.
Okay, all opposed? Any opposed? Okay, alright, so Mr. Holman, I guess it's up to you.
I'll take it. Ladies and gentlemen, we have two public hearings on the agenda tonight. One's a rezoning request and one is a variance request, but we'll follow the same procedure for each. I will call the matter, and if you are here, that if you've, if you've made the application, please come to the podium. Tell the members of our planning commission your name, and then explain, uh, the basis for your petition. I will then ask for those who are here to speak in favor of the request. Uh, if that is a reason that you are here, that is to speak in favor of the request, that would be your opportunity to speak. Uh, if you are here to speak against the request, I will then ask, is there anyone here to speak against the request? And that would be your opportunity to be heard. I would then give the applicant or the proponent an opportunity to respond to any objections that have been asserted. We will then receive a staff report and any question from the planning commission, and then the matter will be to the planning commission. Our planning commission, uh, makes a recommendation to the council on both the rezoning as well as the variance, and these matters are scheduled to be heard by the city council on August the eighteenth at seven o'clock during the city council regularly scheduled meeting. So the first item for public hearing tonight is a rezoning request. Property located at fifty-seven sixty-eight Athens Street. Tax parcel number one-five-oh-oh-six-A-oh-oh-one-oh-oh-one. Kirk Adams, executor of the Lewis Adams Estate seeks to rezone one point five acres from A or agricultural to R-one, single-family residential, to subdivide for a home site from the current parcel that consists of twenty point one-nine acres. Is the applicant witness?
Yes, sir. My name is Kirk Adams, uh, fifty-nine eleven Homer Highway, Lula, Georgia. Uh, I'm the executor of my dad's estate, Louis Adams, uh, who passed in January of this year. Uh, my dad owned a parcel of land of twenty or so acres. Uh, my sister and I, who both live on the property there in adjacent, um, lots, uh, have made our own family decisions as far as how we're dividing it. Uh, with me taking a large part of the pasture land and my sister taking the home place of my dad and, uh, a few acres there. Uh, the reason for my rezoning request tonight is because of the agricultural zoning that it's in. If we, we can't divide that without a five-acre minimum parcel. So we are requesting that the council consider, uh, allowing us to rezone this one and a half acres and the house into R-one so that, uh, that parcel can be ultimately sold to one of our family members, but it cannot be divided out unless that acreage is less than, uh, the five in R-one. So that's the purpose for our request. Nothing's really changing other than that, but in order to be able to transfer that property to my sister's daughter, uh, it's got to be rezoned in that area in order to have that minimal amount of acreage, which is one and a half acres.
Thank you. Any questions from the planning commission at this point of the hour? Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anyone here to speak in favor of this request? Anyone here to speak in favor? Is anyone here to speak against or in opposition to this request? Anyone in opposition? Then I'll turn it over for our staff report and then, uh, com- or commission being entitled to asking.
Alright, you guys, you guys should have received this staff report last week, about midweek. Um, as you heard, it is for property located at fifty-seven sixty-eight Athens Street. It's currently identified as tax parcel fifteen-zero-zero-six-A-oh-oh-one-oh-oh-one. Uh, uh, Kirk Adams is the executor for Lewis's Adams Estate. There, uh, we presented you on page two of that, the analysis. Basically, the adjacent properties and what they're being used for there. The, um, we looked at the extent that the property values would be diminished by, by the particular zoning restrictions. Uh, we looked at the extent to which the destruction of property values promote the health, safety, moral, mor- morals, general welfare of the public as opposed to the property owner. The relative gain to the public as compared to the hardship imposed upon the individual property owner. And we go on there through answering the, all of the questions that are in the code, up through all eighteen of them. At the end of the day, what you get, you currently have three parcels, you're gonna wind up with three parcels, with what the family plans to do. The property across the street does have some R-one zoning, so it's not spot zoning. It's a continuation of what's happening down that way. So the staff recommendation to you is to consider the approval of the rezoning request from agriculture to R-one on the one point five acres that's located at fifty-seven sixty-eight Athens Street and further identified, as I said, Hall County Tax Parcel Fifteen-zero-zero-six-A, uh, zero-zero-one-zero-zero-one. And I, if there's any specific questions you have on the eighteen questions, I'll be glad to answer them for, uh, answer, answer your question.
I'll declare the public hearing closed and members of the commission may certainly pose any questions to the applicant or to the staff if you have any questions.
Any questions?
I don't see anyone here. Don't change.
Uh, we'd like a.
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and we have a second to approve. And we'd like to pass that on to the council next week for their final approval on that.
You go ahead and take your vote, Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
Go ahead and take your vote, you do have a motion and a second.
And, uh, get anything I blew this?
Yeah.
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 Thank you.
Okay, we have approval.
Thank you. Now, call for a public hearing for property located at six-seven-oh-seven East Wind Drive in Lula. Hall County Tax Parcel oh-nine-oh-six-five-oh-oh-oh-oh-ninety-nine. J.J.A.D.L.L.C. seeks variances to one. Reduce the setback from lookout circle from eighty feet to forty feet. And two, to reduce the setback from East Wind Drive from eighty feet to thirty feet for property zone agricultural. Is the applicant here? Come forward, please, ma'am.
I'll introduce myself. I'm Judy Winters, um, long-standing love for Lula. Taught here for fifteen years before I retired as a teacher. Uh, I am asking for this lot to end the subdivision. That was, the flat was approved in nineteen ninety-five. And the homes that were established in that subdivision all are between the setbacks of thirty to forty feet from the street. And this has been, uh, rezoned agriculture where its agriculture and setbacks have changed. And, um, the setbacks currently make this lot unbuildable. Um, so what we're asking with the soils, the soils has proved that it has excellent soils for the ordinary se- uh, an ordinary septic system. It would provide affordable housing for the city of Lula. Um, ironically, I have a lot of students that I called at Lula Elementary that are now beginning to buy their first homes. So, um, a lot of interest in this area. Um, also adjacent to this property, back behind it, is, uh, high-density housing that has been approved that, uh, really is about a block, maybe two blocks away from this. Um, and you guys have, I think, that, that now that there shows you where the high-density housing is, where it backs up to this East Wind subdivision. So the setbacks we're asking for are because it is on a corner lot. If it's on one street, we would need forty feet and on the other, eight thirty.
Questions of the applicant from the commission at this time?
You are seeking to put a, uh, mobile home on this lot?
Yes, sir.
Manufactured home? New or used?
Brand new. And it will have a, um, when we finish, it will have a brand new brick foundation. I don't know how brick, because it looks very nice. It's gonna have new porches, according to the, uh, codes that you guys have set for the town, for the city of Lula. Uh, in a septic system, it will, um, improve the lot and improve the tax code. I mean, the city of Lula will benefit from this later, over, over years.
What, what's a square feet of mobile home?
Uh, it is a, I want to say about, uh, one hundred and fifty-eight square feet, something along that, I think. I'd have to look. We haven't, we haven't.
Thirteen fifty, thirteen fifty.
Thirteen.
Thirteen fifty?
Yes, sir.
And that will be on septic, correct?
Septic, yes, sir.
And this, uh, site plan is typical of what it will be.
The site plans for that particular watch have not been done yet because of the variance.
Right.
We would need the variance, but yes, it would be redrawn on scale. I usually have it through scale when I submitted it to Frank. So it would have to be redrawn and re-submitted for a permanent, the permanent process, but it would be, uh, based on the lot and the setbacks that were approved.
They may have other questions as we wrap up. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this request? Anyone here to speak in favor? Is anyone here to speak in opposition to the request? Anyone here to speak against the request? Come forward, please. Tell the commission your name and where you live.
Now, um, all these lots that people want variances on, keep in mind, she said septic. Now, um, in my business, you got to make sure the health department looks and see, you know, if the ground hurts. Now, if you move it forward, if that yard does not hurt, then you're gonna have room for septic coming around the front. So keep that in consideration, you know, before you can give variances to boost up closer to the road, you know, these builders and people needs to perk their property. And let health department know, really, this building's set or treasure the house and whatever. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe I saw another hand. Yes, sir.
Yes, of the.
Let me, let me get you to tell me their, your name, where you live.
Kenneth Griffin, and I live, uh, in the subdivision that joins where this lot is. They're talking about putting a mobile home on. To start with, we shouldn't even be having this discussion because this was designed for a mobile home to be there anyway. It was designed for ten homes, ten trailers, with a green space between all the trailers. Go back and look at the, the same stuff that I talked Frank about. Uh, look at the flat where all this was laid out to be. That's the way that was the original intent for it to be. Ten homes, which the homes where they want to put the mobile homes are, that's what they want to do now. I just think that the, you know, the people now of city needs to go back and honor what was done back then when it was first brought in and agreed that that's what it's gonna be. There was gonna be a green space between the two subdivisions. And now that's not even being done. The other thing is, I don't know how it suddenly passes the perk test when it's never passed for all the other people that's owned it. That's the reason why these lots been sitting empty for years when they went past the perk test. And I don't know what's up with that. But, and I have nothing against y'all personally, but I think if I was here in my shoes, I'd be doing the same, right? So I just, uh, I just don't agree with it. The other, the, the, another big thing is, is just everybody needs to be treated the same instead of certain people getting special considerations. Because it's not been that long that we had a bunch of our setbacks in our subdivision taken away from us. And I just don't think that's right. You know, they took, took away more from us than, that should have never been done. Anyway, thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else to speak in opposition to the request? Come forward, please.
My name is Robert Grizzle, seeks to warn the neighborhood ways, I live on the corner of the next subdivision. You know, we two have invested in Lula decades ago. And continued to invest in Lula over the decades. In valuation of our homes. Just speaking this room, our homes would be drastically reduced in valuation because of these mobile homes. Now, first of all, as they say, they're not gonna live there. This could make a different story, but they're not planning on living there. This is rental property, which further devaluates the surrounding real estate. It's not, it's not planned for those. It shouldn't be allowed now, it shouldn't be changed, but they should have looked at that before they bought the lots. Knowing how they bought the lots with the setbacks where it in place, that's the way it is. As Mr. Griffin said, my property went from a fifteen-foot setback on the rear and thirty-five setback on the front to a hundred-foot setback on the rear. So if either one of these gentlemen come out there and measure thirty-five foot back on the front and a hundred foot back on the back, you don't have to worry about the twenty-five foot side setbacks. I would have the property, have minus six foot property. But here we are asking to take it from eighty foot and change it to thirty foot. The re- exact reverse of what we've been here since the blue too. You know, we've been here a long time. And we're not renting our houses out. We've invested in Lula for the long run, but we keep getting stuff taken away from us. Now they're trying to take what value of home we got left, taken away by putting in rental trailers. Have not against folks either. I like to go out and make money. But if I was looking to make money in the trailer business, I'd go look for a trailer lot in a mobile home park or where they should be allowed without having to ask them. Put it in somebody's subdivision around other houses that it knowingly is gonna devalue. They wouldn't like it. My client would, they wouldn't like it. Even one of y'all would like it if they stood next to your house. And again, I looked into this septic tank situation about the perk test, but it's got to have a soil san- science or stamp on it, easily checked out at the fire and health department in the morning. Because therefore, it would not be allowed. But again, the setbacks, we weren't able to stop our setbacks from being taken away from a developed subdivision. Already developed, and we lost our setbacks. Why in the world would our zoning board now take setbacks and do the reverse to put in a mobile home that is admittedly a rental mobile home? Yeah, we've got a lot of houses built in Lula, but this is not the way we need to do it. About putting more rental property, rental property in it being a mobile home. Because it does devalue the property around it. We've been investing here a long time. All of us in the state of Kansas coming here to speak in opposition. We built our homes here, our families here, and God knows, I think if we get money to change the value of my home, and now I'm already in the uphill battle. Forget the mobile homes, I'm already in the uphill battle. But then you get this, it's just a kick in the teeth after losing. All of my property is back to do anything. Went from fifteen foot to a hundred. I lost, I've literally got minus six foot of property all the way across my property. Thank you, gentlemen.
Anyone else to speak in opposition to the request? Would give the applicant an opportunity to respond to the comments in opposition?
Okay, the first question about the, um, sewer and the setbacks. All the lots have good soils that will allow for more than enough footage of repair for a three-two home. So you can put the septic system in like a regular septic system, and then it will have the allowed hundred fifty feet, two hundred fifty feet of repair for each lot. So that, the soils perked and the soils are good for that. Secondly, we, um, by no means are creating a rental environment. This is going to be a home that is a new construction home that will be overseen by a general contractor that is licensed in the state of Georgia and then sold to a, um, person that is looking for affordable housing in Lula. Um, and that subdivision has many mobile homes. It has some houses, but it does have mobile homes. And those mobile homes up in there since the establishment of this subdivision.
Thank you. Question from the commission?
I do have one question on the, uh, there's been a lot of disputes there based on the perk test. Have you already had these lots perk tested at this point? So you've got those?
Yes, and the department has issued the permit.
Okay.
City of Lula is very specific about that. There, without the steps that you have to take.
Thank you. Then we have the staff report?
Uh, let's talk about definitions real quick. Just, uh, that's what we, all of us, uh, use, use the terms incorrectly from time to time. The trailer is created nineteen seventy-two. And mobile home is seventy-two to eighty-two. And manufactured home is posted eighty-two. So semantics of what they represent, they're still all under double house. Um, and very familiar, uh, J.J.A.D.L.L.C. They own five parcels in there, they have five remaining undeveloped parcels, that are correct. The promptly, currently in discussion is a corner lot, so it has two, uh, two front, which is a double front road. Um, it is sixty-seven-oh-seven East Wind Drive. It is, uh, Hall County Tax Parcel oh-nine-oh-six-six, zero-zero, zero-zero, zero-nine-nine. Um, looking at the character area of the property. So the beyond zoning, character area was traditional residential. The property is zone agricultural, the entire subdivision is. So East Winds and the adjacent subdivision of Naramo are both agricultural properties. In this case, they're asking for variances for the, so the setbacks on actions, eighty-five B front setback, twenty-five slab setback, and forty rear setbacks. That is what the, uh, zoning code is. Um, so going on, on the analysis side. We did look into Ken Griffin's questions as far as the, what the council intended and what the council voted and what the flat, uh, shows, the report of the flat. There were discussions, uh, the first number of months prior to it, there were discussions about how, what type of homes would be in there. When it came to the vote, the vote was strictly on the number of lots. They did not distinguish ten B for manufactured home, ten B for site built. That was a discussion earlier, but it's not part of the vote, uh, protocol. When the flat was reported later in the year, that had no stipulations on there that were different from that. So the vote was a straight overall subdivision, agricultural zone. Um, so these five lots, and on this one in particular, they have rammed other lots, meaning with the change that happened in the zoning code over time. They do not meet the minimum lot size for agricultural zoning districts, okay? All the lots in the east wing subdivision would be more appropriately zoned, or four would be state residential or R-one, single-family residential. The R-four zone would produce both site built and manufactured homes. It would address the setback issues. That's not where we're at, at tonight. The, um, the property with the double front age, setbacks would apply to both home and manufactured home, that wouldn't change. So going on, on page two, section twenty-three-oh-nine. So, going on, on page two, section twenty three oh nine, criteria, consider for variances. And you're empowered to look at things and consider where we're going, but your questions about midway down. If you considered the conditions, that's where I'm, you know, page two and go on. You can say any one could be a reason for denial. It doesn't require all of them. But, um, the first question there, access to the ordinary exceptional conditions pertaining to the particular piece of property in the question, because of the size, shape, or to property that are not, not applicable to other land or structures in the same district. There is nothing extraordinary or exceptional, or exceptional conditions pertaining to this piece of property that would not be applicable to other land or structures in the same agricultural zoning district. So the dimensions that we, there, we implied setbacks, and they would have to see the variances regardless of what was at. Number two, a little interpretation of provisions of these zoning regulations would create unnecessary hardship and deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other property owners within the district and in which the property is located. So you have the, basically an answer in front of you. The little interpretation of the provisions of the agricultural zoning district would create unnecessary hardship, but it would not deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other property owners within the district. All manufactured homes on Lookout Court, along with the church and cul-de-sac, are set back from the road. Four of the homes on East Wind Drive are set back a minimum thirty five feet from the front property line, while the home on Lot One is only set back twenty feet, so it's less than what they're asking for. From, um, from the front, East Wind Drive, sixty feet from the front property line on Belt and British Road, so. Three, granting the variance request will not defer upon property owner of the act, of the, upon the property of the applicant, any special privileges that are denied to other properties in the district in which the applicant property is located. So granting the variance would confer a special privilege on the others in the agricultural zoning district or the subdivision. However, Lot Ten ranges with a depth of a hundred and fifty point nine seven feet on the inside of the property, down to sixty feet on the western property line along Lookout Court. As a legal law record, at the time of fighting, the city must work with the property owner, find a viable solution to get a usable setback for property. With the proposed forty foot that's set back, the twenty eight foot deep manufactured, manufactured home will have to be set twenty five feet on the eastern property line, with forty foot front setback and the twenty five southern setback, side southern setback, with the property still having ninety foot, ninety three foot depth of the east wind drive. So yeah, there are limitations, but they can fit within that. Number four, relief of granite will be in harmony with the purpose and intent of these regulations, and will not be injurious, injurious to the neighborhood or general welfare in such an area as will interfere, let or discourage the appropriate development, the use of adjacent land and buildings, or unreasonably affect their value. Response, relief of granite will not be injurious to the neighborhood or general welfare of the community, it will not discourage appropriate development on adjacent properties, and will not have unreasonable effect on property values. The, uh, and that's based on them being sold and not rented property. So the sold, and that's, somebody homesteaded, and its tax value is the same value as any other homesteaded home. And the value is based on the, it's like the full tax base. The spec- the, number five, the special circumstances are not the result of the applicant, actions of the applicant. Here, that circumstance is not not the result of the actions of the applicant. The city and county council approved this to govern at the end of two thousand, and the plat was quoted in June of two thousand one. The city has not been consistent in enforcing setbacks in this subdivision. Rather than running, rather than allowing the handkerchiefs, in this case, the corner lot has two front lines under our current zoning code, meaning we do not permit that to choose one street as a front and the other as a side lot, but rather both are not lots. So, that's something that's gone with the zoning code over time, not with the property. Number six, variance requests, the minimum variance that will make possible legal use of land, building, or structure, in this case, we're talking land. While this variance request is not the minimum variance that could make a lot useful for a single home, it is close to the minimum applying local fine and side setbacks to that property, because it would have to be shifted to, when you look at it, from, um, east wind to the right hand side of the property. Um, number seven, variance is not a request for permitted use of land, building, or structure which are not permitted by right in the district. The variance request is not seeking the use of the land, that is not, since the manufactured homes are committed in the zoning dis- in the agricultural zoning district. This is a request to enable the structure to be placed on the property whilst still meeting an admitted setback on this area of corner lot. Number eight, variance shall not be granted in cases where the request only takes property owner to be remitted by changing, by a change that is only district coverage, otherwise will not be required, will not otherwise require a variance. In this case, the use of the last, of the twenty five, uh, twenty lots due east wind exceed the half acre size. With zoning, a single lot would be spot zoning. Additionally, any zoning would take away the ability to place manufactured homes on property as they are not permitted in R one and R two. That's why the zoning would address setback issues that would not permit replacement of a manufactured home on property. As, as for further discussion, um, on the plat, there, there was a large buffer around a portion of the property, and it's just a hundred feet. In this section, if you look at your attachments, that drops down to a standard, okay, so it looks like that. The, the fifty foot buffer drops down to nothing, nothing along where it backs, it backs up against Nairmore Court. Like I said earlier, there were discussions by council back in the day. Do, do you have the buffer towards Nairmore? That's not what they voted on. So there, this is standard setback, and it would not apply to this property anyhow, because that Lot Ten is internal to the property and not at boundaries of the subdivision. So the staff recommendation was to recommend, to recommend to you, put the following conditions. Uh, one, an evergreen vegetable buffer of a minimum of ten feet, the, the maintenance adjacent to lots nine and eleven, so the two lots of each side, which should provide some privacy for each other. And for those of you that have looked at the tax map and the survey that's attached, it appears that the home on Lot Eleven definitely doesn't, wasn't put in to meet side setbacks through time, through time that's put in. That's why I was speaking vigil, so putting in that ten foot, uh, buffer would help there, because that's pretty close to the property one. The finals, uh, number two, the final setup, the location of home is determined by a surveyor to ensure the setback is met, and if the surveyor showed the home setback, it provided as part of the request for a subscription of the property. Number three, that the toning being handled as required by section seven twenty A one. And other questions?
Any questions from commission? Thank you, then I'll declare the public hearing closed. Any questions?
Are there other homes that are in that subdivision on city sewer?
Um, the churches, uh, one, two, three of the homes are. You got, that's been since we put in sewer line I several years ago, but the original homes are not there at present. And the question, the part of that question is, early discussions that we had, we wanted them to connect to sewer, health department came back, and this week with our distance requirement, they only required two hundred feet. And we were trying to apply a thousand feet, so the environmental health trumped us on that one.
So with the addition of the other lots, uh, once they're built on, would that reduce that?
Would it?
Your-
No, no. The, the nearest manholes are between six and eight hundred feet from their properties. So we require an easement across two of the lot, two of the existing lots that are built on to get to them. But once they get to their lots, they could run them however they needed.
So what you're referring to is the minimum distance, that if you're within a thousand feet of city sewer,
That's what we-
Were, you're required to hook on to sewer?
The health department is only applying at two hundred feet. So if you want-
To this situation here, or?
Across the board.
Okay.
If you're more than less, more than two hundred feet away, they don't require it.
Okay. And this is Lot Ten we're looking at tonight for this variance. That's an interior lot.
It's an interior corner of East Wind and Lookout.
So there's a Lot Nine-
Lot Nine has a bit of a-
And Eleven, it sort of is the buffer between Nairmore subdivision and this lot.
Uh, no, the buffer would be Lot Nine and Eight.
There, there's not a Lot Eleven.
But-
Well, I was just looking at the one, I was just looking at bordering.
Yes, they answered, yeah. Yes, and the more probably through Lot Ten, it's eleven and nine.
Yeah.
But you're right in that respect, because eleven goes all the way back, it's just ten thousand.
So it's my understanding, the remainder of the lots in the, most of the lots in the subdivision have been done by eyeballing it, and they've been basically given whatever variant, I mean, distance they need before we set code that says this is the setback. Okay.
Uh, most of the manufactured homes, with the exception of Eleven, are set back pretty well into the, into their properties. Uh, lots one through five have standard homes, uh, nine of those meet the front setbacks. They, they don't be able to meet side setbacks, with the exception of, um, Marshall. Which is a double front.
Now you're saying not meeting the setbacks that are in place now?
Right, and would, and... Yes, yes.
How much acres does the county have for a mobile home?
How many?
How much acres do you have to have in the county, you have to put up?
Don't know that specifically. The, the minimum for septic is that pushing for two.
Say, two acre, two-
The county doesn't allow mobile homes to be put in anymore unless it's pre-existing.
Really?
You saying, did you answer it with two acres is what's required for septic?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, what's the lot size on this particular one, does it meet the two acre?
No, it's half acre.
Okay.
Twenty, twenty-
So I'm just trying to make sure where the conflict is there. If we're saying the county has a two acre requirement for a septic minimum, would that then say that if this is less than two, does it still allow for septics on these lots?
Yes, because it's a historic lot of record, it's not a new lot.
Okay, okay.
So...
Got you.
If we were trying to do a new subdivision-
Understand, got you.
Be a home, a home in-
Got you.
If any of those development regulations would still have to be followed, you, you're just dealing with the variance request, but any, if, if the health department does not permit the, uh, septic tank, for any reason, they, they wouldn't be able to, your decision would not affect that rule.
I mean, I don't see anything here. Would be particularly, wouldn't be unfair of us to, to voting against letting them do this, just based off of what's already there.
I've got mixed feelings on it personally, just because I do see the point of, you know, we do establish guidelines to be used. And, you know, and then we've had this same discussion on P U D and other throughout time, where we come back and someone, this is how it's established, and then gets backed off from that to give lesser amounts in, in many cases.
And I think it, like you're saying, current-
It's just setting a precedent.
President, right. For future, that if it's not followed now, how do we stop it in the future? Those are put in place for a purpose, and, uh, I believe they need to be followed.
Do we need some more time to discuss this, you think?
I mean, but the, to, uh, uh, staff's point, it's not, what's already there would not exist in our current precedents.
Right.
To, to disallow a similar situation, just doesn't seem fair to the property owner.
My point's not really too, I mean, I, I have zero problems with a nice manufactured home with a brick base. I think it will bring-
Airs.
What we need brought, honestly, I don't think there's that large of a detriment, you know, in, in joining property values, in my opinion. But the, the concern I've got, and this has been the constant concern, is if we've set and worked towards setting guides within the city, and some of them are very detrimental to a lot of lots that maybe years ago would have had possible use like this. It's just gonna, in my thinking, may open up a lot more of those lots that are not meeting requirements to start coming forward and wanting the same type of variances to be able to do something different. And I may be totally wrong, that's, that's just one concern that I've got. I mean, it's not the concern about the, you know, I'm not trying to disagree with the property owners nearby. You know, I've, I've got all different types of homes near my home. And, you know, and, and I've had manufactured homes close by, there's one right adjacent across the road. I don't feel like that's been a detriment to our values, so I mean, that's not the point of the property. I just, and that doesn't mean I'm right in this by any means, I'm just saying that I worry about down the road, if we continue to say, okay, this one's okay, this one's okay, this one's okay, then where do we stop that line at? But, just my opinion, and that's-
So the only thing holding back from meeting the setbacks that are in place is the septic, correct? If it's moved back to meet the setbacks, can the septic still be installed? If it met the perk test?
If it meets the perk test, yes.
So it could be moved back to the guidelines of what they're supposed to be and still fit on the lot?
No, it could, would not fit on the lot.
Okay.
Because of the eighty, eighty five, especially on the left hand side, that's from the east wind.
Okay.
It's only, it starts at sixty feet deep, so my front setback is eighty feet, I'm already made-
And the majority of the homes that are currently there don't meet the existing requirements, correct?
The side built homes with the such, do not meet the setback, not setbacks. The manufactured homes on Lookout Court, with the exception of one, meet, meet the setbacks.
I think we need more time on this.
Hey Frank, I got a question, need more time. If the pre-existing homes that don't meet the septic levels were burned down, the new- Burn down, the new home has to meet the setbacks, correct?
I think we need to push it back.
Yeah. I'll make a recommendation or motion that we table this till
Say again?
I'll make a motion we table it to discuss this a little bit further, try and get some more information together on this and make a good decision on this.
Okay, we have a, I second that, motion to, uh, table it. And all in favor of that?
Uh-huh.
We'd like this.
But time frame.
We'd make, uh, maybe, what do you think, maybe two weeks, for a, a more explanation?
Well, uh
Council, we've already advertised, so council will at least have the public hearing on the eighteenth. So I don't know if, uh
Next week?
Right, if planning commission can get together next week, you could have a recommendation
Okay.
Uh, by the, uh, council meeting, and I, I expect it
Do we need a work session?
Do we need to buy a work session? Uh, it'd be a recommendation, and just be Yeah, we have a special call meeting, so y'all just let us know when you can get together.
Okay.
But yes, next week would be preferable, so that we can have something before the eighteenth, and then we could also let those who were here who spoke tonight know when, when that meeting would be.
Okay. So, uh, we'll, uh, plan a meeting and forward that to you.
Alright, we can, uh, the eleventh, and then, uh, we'll publish the notice and let y'all know.
They didn't come up with it, but
They're gonna check their calendars, let, uh, they'll be communicated, I don't know if y'all have it now, if you can do that.
Monday at eleven is not, that's city council, uh, work session, so it's not on the table.
Right.
Anybody free next Tuesday?
I think so.
Tuesday's schedule, I mean. Tuesday, Wednesday, whatever. Twelve, thirteenth.
Okay, okay, any of those?
Twelve, thirteen.
Twelfth?
Twelfth.
Yep.
Twelfth, okay.
Well, six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
Yep.
Six o'clock.
That'll be tabled till August the twelfth at six o'clock. Just for purpose of the audience, there will be no further public hearing, we've closed the public hearing before the planning commission, it'll be for planning commission to have discussion and vote.
So that's all we have on the, uh, public hearings tonight, if anyone wants to leave here for you to go, we got a little workshop, work spending session to go over. I think everybody can count on that.
Is that what you were telling?
Yeah.
As we move to the next section, let me, let me introduce Jerry Neese, he's, for lack of a better term, Benny Me, he's the new assistant city manager. So he's gonna take the first section, um, Article twelve in the draft U D C with you, it's short, so
Does he read faster than you do?
He does. He does, he does.
He got a screen this time?
He does A I, you got, you got it in your desk, uh, you got it in your folder.
Jerry, let me see if I have my batteries on yet.
Okay.
I hope it's not gonna take as long for him, he's putting in new batteries.
He gets the short part.
Yeah.
The next one's much longer.
I can tell you when I can't hear the next section.
Alright, there you go. Okay, this is Article twelve in the uniform, uniform code, um, uniform development code, uh, that you all have been working on For quite a while now, uh, uh, from what I understand, so this is Article twelve for non-conformities. I'm gonna go pretty quick, because I took this whole section and ran it through Chat G P T to give me a good summary. So my words are much shorter than yours. Uh, but it gives a real good, uh, uh, synopsis of what, what you have. Uh, so twelve one, section twelve, non-conformities, non-conforming lots. So a non-conforming lot is one that was legally established before the current zoning code, or an amendment, but no longer meets requirements Such as the minimum access, lot furniture, lot size or width. And then examples of these scenarios include a lot that's eighteen thousand square feet in an area requiring twenty thousand square feet. A lot with sixty-five foot width where a hundred foot is required, sounds like what you all have been dealing with tonight. Uh, a lot with thirty foot furniture where forty foot is required. One thing, uh, every, every city and every county has this issue. Uh, so this is something good that, that you're addressing now. Um, twelve one, development of, uh, twelve one two, uh, development on non-conforming lots, all current zoning, um, Such lots can be used for building or lawful use if all current zoning district dimensional standards are met, setbacks, buffers, for example, or variances obtained. Health department standards or sewer connection are met, so the, they have to meet the, uh, septic requirements from the health department, or tie on the city sewer. If a lot has direct access or a recorded easement to a public or approved private street, there is a, um, An image there for non-conforming lot of record, and it shows, uh, how it would be laid out According to this Explanation for development on a non-conforming lot. Non-conforming buildings, a non-conforming building or structure does not meet, uh, one or more dimensional requirements, height, setbacks, lot coverage, for example, Of the zoning or overlay district, this also includes buildings associated with specific uses governed by Article eleven. In twelve two dash two, expansion, non-conforming buildings can be expanded Only if the expansion is for a use that is permitted in that zoning district or overlay zone. So only, only what, what is permitted for that area. The addition complies fully with current dimensional standards, and an example of that is a building with a fifteen foot setback in a thirty foot setback zone Must meet the thirty foot setback for new construction. Height or lot coverage limitations must not be exceeded by the addition, and you have an image that shows How those additions can and cannot be incorporated into the, uh, expansion. Uh, at the front, um, at the top of the, uh, it shows the expansion is allowed, but at the rear, it's, oh, I'm sorry. Cause they're showing the road is actually the bottom, I apologize, uh, the front, uh, that addition could not be allowed, but at the back it could be. Um, so the images are there to, to help clear that up. Replacement or repair after damage, if a non-conforming building is damaged or destroyed by more than sixty percent Uh, of the cost or size, it must be rebuilt in full compliance with current zoning code. So far, any questions? Non-conforming uses, got some more definitions, abandoned, which is ceasing use of, uh, or occupancy for twelve or more months. Uh, discontinuance is when the property is inactive for six to twelve months. When a business registration is required and has lapsed more than six months, the business registration lapse shall constitute a discontinuance. Make sure I don't get this Confused. If y'all have any questions, please let me know. Non-conforming use, oh, here we go, yeah, six, twelve months, yeah, non-conforming use of previously lawful use that is no longer permitted due to zoning changes. So there's the three definitions for abandoned, discontinuance, and non-conforming use. And then
Done this before we had the meeting today.
Well, as we go forward, this will help, this will definitely help. Uh, twelve three, uh, dash two, owner responsibilities, the property owner must provide evidence to the planning director that the use was legally established before zoning changes. And then twelve three three, continuation, a non-conforming use, for example, convenience store in residential zone may continue unless otherwise restricted. Twelve three four, discontinuance, if the use ceases for six to twelve months, the owner may re-establish it Only by approving diligent efforts to continue the use, re-establishment is not allowed after twelve months, unless these efforts are shown. So after twelve months They'll have to meet the conforming rules if I'm not mistaken. Uh, then abandonment at twelve three five, a use that has ceased for twelve months or more is considered abandoned and cannot be re-established. Twelve three six, change of use, changing from one non-conforming use to another is not allowed. However, ownership or tenancy changes are permitted if the use remains unchanged. Twelve three seven, expansion, non-conforming uses may be expanded either in land area or in building volume. No additional buildings or space may be added to support the use, and you, you have an image there that shows how that works. Twelve three eight, damage and repair or re-establishment, if more than sixty percent of a building or use is destroyed Yeah, it may not be re, may not be rebuilt unless the new use complies with zoning. Residential office uses in such structures may be re-established within eighteen months. Anybody have any questions so far? Section twelve three nine, unsafe buildings, if the building is unsafe and housed a non-conforming use, or had condis, had discontinued such use It must be restored by the property owner to a safe condition as ordered by the building official. Twelve four, non-conforming signs, so now we're getting into the signs. Regulations for signs that don't meet current code requirements are located in Article nineteen, so we'll have to go to another article to Address non-conforming signs. Correction of non-conforming situations in twelve dash five. Definitions, non-conforming situations refer to land development issues not covered under other non-conforming definitions. Such examples are lack of required off-street parking, inadequate access, failure to adhere to landscape or tree protection requirements. The intent of twelve five dash two, full correction of non-conforming situations is required during new development or major modifications when physically possible. If not fully correctable, partial compliance or reduction is required. The planning director is authorized to enforce this chapter. Twelve dash five dash three, determination of non-conforming situations, at the time of plan's submittal, the planning director will One, identify existing non-conforming situations, two, notify the applicant of correction or reduction requirements. Twelve dash five dash four, standards of review for compliance. A, strict compliance, required where it can be done without major redesign. B, reasonable progress, applied where full compliance causes hardship or limits project feasibility. And then C, proportionality, required improvements must be in proportion to the proposed development scope and cost. Twelve dash five dash five, there's an appeal process, decisions made by the planning director may be appealed to the planning and zoning commission Within fifteen days following the decision. Is that it? I thought there was a couple more sections. Do you all have any questions? And that's, that's the summary that I pulled out of the actual
I like the summary.
It makes it a little more simple. Cause sometimes there's a lot of legal ease, thanks to the term recently. Alright, now we get to the slow part, sorry guys, you have Article fourteen.
Did you teach you how to use the Chat G P T?
I have.
Will, sorry.
I have.
I did, but it's, doesn't really shorten it much.
He did, I think it shortened it by about twenty pages, but no.
About.
Like I said, we're probably, and most likely not gonna get through all of this tonight, but I wanna get as far as possible, so this is where we're talking about subdivisions And the requirements for subdivisions, so The purpose intent there in fourteen one one, really doesn't change from where, where we're at today. Uh, basically delegating authority from the governing body to the administrative officers, which basically is your city manager, assistant city manager. Um, there are some, uh, addresses to the directors of public works and water and sewer and places. And they do define who they are on page one sixty-two. And, and these, while we're going through review The land is still one property until it is subdivided with a final plat, so even though they have a preliminary plat That shows a hundred lots is still considered one property for discussions. Uh, subdivision of land, we get into Basically definitional requirements, and it is pretty much what we do today, we're talking about That it basically has to meet the zoning, we're talking about who can do it, and we're talking about descriptions, uh, being by meets and bounds in the instrument of transfer And, um And other documents used in the process of selling and transfer should not exempt the transaction of this article, so even if they're sold, they still have to go by this article. Uh, what we say here, the city may require a final plat for multiple five or more lots being subdivided off an existing road Be validated by stamp from the public works department. So if we have roads where somebody has a big parcel and they try to cut off You know, just furniture type things without going, trying to go through, it still has to be signed off by the city through the public works that It's not interfering with a site distance, uh, speed, speed determinations, and those kind of things. Um, fourteen point one dash five, reference to state or federal subdivision laws, there's nothing in here that We're trying to do that, that would impinge on those requirements. Fourteen one six, special review of subdivisions along state routes, basically what we say is along state routes, G doc gets a review. Uh, we basically give them a thirty day window from the time we give it to them, to give us some kind of feedback Before we can move along with our own review. Uh, so, so that is in keeping, fourteen one seven, lots must comply with zoning requirements, so you can't create a Tiny lot in the middle of something that's smaller than what's allowed by zoning. Fourteen one eight, improvements required for final plating, no final subdivision shall be approved by the director or accepted Until all improvements required by this article have been constructed in satisfactory manner, improved by the director of public works, or in cases of utilities, the director of public utilities, or in this case, water and wastewater. The, so we're saying that there's a requirement in there that you have X, Y, Z amenities, they have to be done before you can final plat. Um, lot combinations and boundary adjustments, so we're talking about, if you go to the picture on the ba, bottom of one Sixty-three, these are sort of line adjustments and not creating a new subdivision, lot more, um The boundary line adjustment is, we're just changing property lines between two properties, we're not creating a new parcel, so that doesn't fall under this. And the other one is where we eliminate a parcel, and you do see this, uh
Now you do see this, uh, from time to time. In this case, where you see there is lot two, the house was built over the lot line between lot two and lot three. So for our purposes, there's only one lot and for tax purposes, it should be combined and recognized in taxes, one parcel. Uh, one, dash, ten, yes. Yes, yes, sir. Yes. So roads, uh, water, sewer lines, uh, wellhouse, lift station. Whatever's required in the review that would be identified on the plans. On their construction plans and LDP plans. And so in the case of moss farms, that would also include the pool house. But that's by phase and number of lots that could be planted prior to it having to be completed. So any amenities might be included in that depending on conditions that council approved. Am I? It, it's not talking about selling, it's by the, the staff, basically the director approving the plat for record, recording.
Yeah, no, I agree.
Okay.
That's why, that's the reason I'm asking what they'd have to have finished construction in order to record the plat.
I would say all infrastructure at, at a minimum. Unless there was a condition that gave them an outdoor timeframe. I'll let you review that and get back. I know you have a concern there somewhere, so, okay.
So what you'd be saying then would be they'd have to have all infrastructure completed.
Yes.
Wellhouses, roads, um.
Before, before they came to us to ask for a recordation. So if it wasn't complete, this says we couldn't sign it.
Unless it, unless it was approved for a certain percentage before.
Variants are, um. Typically what you will see sometimes is on the amenities that you can get. You could final plat it without being completed, but you couldn't get another building permit until after lot ten. You could get permits for the first ten, but then it'd have to be done. So that's a case where it could be fi- final planted without.
And I don't want to delay this, but that's what I'm accustomed to seeing is the plat being able to be recorded if it's shown whatever the requirements are. But then you come down to your permit, you can't get your permit until it's been inspected and, and proved. That you've built it the way that the law requires it to be built, but it doesn't bar the developer from proceeding on with getting their plat recorded so that they pre-sell their lots.
Uh, another typical one in that would be. And we'll get into discussion a little later in this section is. The final top coat on a road. Usually it's X number of homes, uh, lots built on our tot, our X months. So there, there's things like that that would be out there. All right. So the next section, uh, fourteen, one, ten, uh, basically is we're reserving our rights with the superior clerk of super hairy court both in banks and hall county. That they, that we have the opportunity to review them and then to sign off on them with our stamp prior to them being recorded at the county clerk office. Um, fourteen, dash, one, dash, eleven exemptions. So we do provide for some exemptions. From the subdivision requirements. A is creation, sale of cemetery plots. That falls under state law and there's regulations that guide that. B, the sales, the sale of lots consistent with previously approved and recorded plats or deeds. So sort of what we did tonight. It's existing, we're not trying to recreate the wheel. Okay. Number three, uh, C, the creation of leaseholds for space within multiple occupancy building or division property into leaseholds, but not for sale for commercial, industrial and institutional uses. So we're not dividing the, the land and selling off to somebody and still belongs to a single owner. E, any division of land to heirs through a judicial estate proceeding. Or any division of land pursuing, pursuant to a judicial partition or any division of land occurring from foreclosure of deed of trust. Provided higher that such exemption should not require the city to issue permits at the resulting lots. Or parcels fail to meet or any applicable zoning provisions regarding lot size, lot width or other dimensional requirements. So that can be split by the judge's order. We don't necessarily, if they don't comply, have to issue building permits for them. Um. Fourteen, one, dash, two, development of land. Um. Bear with me just a minute. So basically this is just telling us there's a process and the city council is the final approval on the, the lot layout. So. Uh, then we get into definition sections and most of those are carryovers, but we do, did add them. And I'm not gonna read each of those to you. Uh, please do, if you have an issue with one, let me know, but these are all basically current terms. You know, we talk about deflection angles in design. That's not in our current standards, but we're asking people to look at that. We talk about, um, we define roadways and roadway widths. We talk about the terms of, of. Bu- a block and how we define a block. We're talking about tangents and street jugs in the roads. Those are just defining them to a civil engineering standard. Um. The, we talk about conservation subdivisions, uh, dedication, dedication of plats, so how they get done. Uh, perpetual easements, basically for our use. Uh, final plats, we talk about lots of record and there's one where Joey and I need to get together and settle a question there and highlight it in yellow. We talk about lot types, whether they're corner, interior lots, flag lots, through, double frontage through lots. So you, uh, see that process, uh, how you get to your minimum lot areas for lot depth and width. And your meets and bounds descriptions. As, and it goes on, um. Subdividers, so fourteen, dash, three, but like I said, look at those if you have questions, get with me, but those are. The, um, typical definitions. Fourteen, three, design requirements for block, blocks and lot, and lots. So one of the things we're asking for today is the land physicals, physically unsuitable for subdivision or development because of flooding, poor drainage, steep slopes, rock formations, other such features that may endanger health, life. Or property aggravate erosion, increase flood hazards or necessa- necessitate excessive expenditures of public funds. Versus why and maintenance of services shall not be approved for subdivision. So this is where we're getting to. Some of the areas that we haven't looked at in the past where we got steep slopes. Um, we have large gullies where the storm, storm drains runs through in the middle of a property. We've platted them, but they have to. And one of those is lot eight and what we talked about earlier in east wind. Uh, basically we've gone back and said, as they work on that one, it's gonna require site civil. Because it's definitely gonna impact the neighbors behind them. And we wanna see how they address the storm drain that comes through, the storm water that comes through. So. That one was not a variance item. It is, is if you wanna use it, you're gonna have to show how you're gonna address the issues that exist on that property. Um, eleventh, uh, fourteen, three, three, two, conformance to the comprehensive plan. Excuse me. Uh, as we've been discussing and as you've seen with the rezonings and everything else that's come over you. One of the things we give you in all the assessments is what the character area is. To try to, uh, require compliance. That our decisions are guided by what, what we said we wanted to happen in the future. Uh, the one that jumps out to me there. Is, um. At, um, Julian Ball, at the intersection of Julian Ball and fifty-two. We rezoned property several years ago to MRI, so light and industrial. It's still being used for agricultural purposes, which is fine. But we didn't change the future land use at that time to address, because that area is supposed to be residential, future land use. So we, at that time, we should have done both, address the future land use as a residential. Or do we change it to industrial to address that? So this is just pointing that out clearly that we have to address the comp plan in, in that area. Okay, um, fourteen, three, dash, three, uh, block lengths and, and widths. So we're basically saying how long it cannot exceed, how short it can be. And how deep the lots would be to make it consistent. So we're looking for consistency. So we don't have a block with five homes and a block with forty homes. That they're all, you know, ten, twelve homes in those block lengths. And we're also saying that we're looking for two tiers of lots, not trying to cram in inaccessible third tier. That's done through flag lots or something. Uh. And I see a typo. So the next one is fourteen, three, dash, four. Uh, width and, and depth of size lots. So we do give some room for changes and variance in lots, uh, those lot dimensions. Uh, but their depth not greater than three times the width of the lot. And that's, that's gonna come more from your. Municipal side than the rural side of the commu- of the community. So Jefferson, at this point, Jackson County, for the most part, but, um, Gainesville. So we're saying those lots should be consistently formed and they, we shouldn't have one lot that's long and narrow. And then the next lot being narrow and deep. They should be consistent, but that does offer some abilities to change the size. Um. That drawing on the bottom. This is an ongoing discussion. And what we're addressing there is. And we've seen it on recent plats to include Cedar Ridge. Is they wanna show you the full buildable area of the lot while they forget that there's a sewer easement, you can't build over it. There's stream setbacks, you can't build in the stream setbacks. So this is where it's saying your buildable lot line on some of these lots may not be a straight line and it's gonna curve with, with the feature. All right, uh, lot lines, building lines, you guys got double frontage. We've talked about flag lots, we've talked about. Um, so ba- basically a lot of places will allow flag lots, only so many per given number of lots. Where you s- do stick a lot further back so it has a minimum frontage, thirty or forty feet up front till you get to the main part of the lot. So your setbacks don't start up here at the road, it starts back where the property widens out. Um. So we're saying you can't create a remnant, so a piece that wouldn't be a full sized lot. It has to be incorporated into something else or be an amenity or things. Uh, monuments, and that goes back to the surveyor. It's consistent with the survey regulations with the state board of registrations for professional engineers and land surveyors and the Georgia plat act. So we're being consistent with that. Uh, fourteen, dash, four, now we're getting into the preliminary plats, so. Yes, yes.
On monuments?
Yes.
Does this? Take into effect two monuments per entryway for a subdivision or one monument or? Or size or is a monument included in the first lot? Or is that gonna be in some other section here somewhere?
We'll come back to it in another section, but, so each monument. And for the most part, I'm gonna tell you it's gonna be the outsides. Exterior of the property and then some proportionate. Shall be a half inch diameter steel rod or number four rebar, at least twenty-four inches long. And that's, that's straight out of the survey, the survey regulations, not us. It does say when a rock is encountered, a hole shall be drilled four inches deep in the rock into which shall be cemented a steel rod, half inch diameter. The top of each shell, each such monument shall be approximately level with the finished grade so we don't run over it. Um, the capping and everything is, we don't talk about here because it's under state laws. So, uh, the surveyors do have options of word that, so we're not gonna address that in any more detail. Did that sort of answer the question? Wayne? He wa- he wants what?
Is that monument?
A concrete monument?
I was on a different page, go ahead.
Okay, um. Excuse me. Um, so basically fourteen, four deals with preliminary plats. Uh, basically the requirement of this is, this is basically where. Your city council is weighing in layout wise. But the concepts and improvement requirements of the subdivision through submittal of the. Application, so any subdivision dividing and dedication of public streets, most of that, most of what we do are public land. Any subdivision involving, involving new public streets shall require submission of preliminary plat. So what we're saying is we wanna see what you're proposing to do. So this isn't full on engineering. This is, yeah, it does have some engineering, it does have topo, but realistically what you can build. Um, relationship with the preliminary plat to land development permit. So basically this is. You can do it concurrently or separately from the land development plans, but you're laying out what you're proposing to, to do it. And some developers choose and want to get approval of the preliminaries at first. Uh, mountain view, that one. You had the preliminary plat as part of the application for rezoning. It was not a fully engineered plan, they're currently going through engineering, the full engineers. So as, as a developer, how far along they wanna go before they do that and that varies. So we get into fourteen, four, three is the specifications, so we're talking about the name of the subdivision, tell us what it's gonna be. The scale and the size of the sheets for our review. Who do we get a hold of, applicant contact, uh, you know, the general miscellaneous stuff that's required by the plat act. You know, tax parcel number, data survey, north point, graphic scale, all that. Um, the use, what are you proposing to do? Location and track boundaries, so the outer side, location map, where does it fit in the community? Um, was it previously subdivided and we're redoing stuff? The zoning district, conditions of approval. So if there were conditions as far as zoning, they'd need to be on there. You'd need to show your water features, your flood plains. Any adjacent streets, easements, political boundaries, built features, uh, the subdivision layout, roughly what you're doing. Phasing, if you're gonna propose phasing, like, um, at this point, moss farms is gonna be multi-phased. At this, I'm gonna say three at this point, basically phase one, which is hundred and twenty lots. The three sixty of the original should be phase two and phase three should be the last thirty acres that we just did the rezoning on. So that's my anticipation, what you see there. Basically what they're gonna do with water and sewer, that's their basic stormwater management plans. And then. We get into what we're looking at as far as approvals, preliminary plat, application requirements, the forms, the number of copies. The review process, so basically, we're trying to hold us and the developer to a schedule. So we're gonna review the application for completeness when it's submitted. Uh we're gonna distribute to any outside agencies, uh either directly or have the applicant do it. Uh right now, the applicant makes, if they're, they would make. Application through the whole county application system, if the fire marshal's gonna review it. So there, if we get into a septic subdivision, it would be environmental health. So those are two directly, um G dot, uh whole county public works for roads. So where, where the road is still the county's and the in- interior property, so they get a, get a way in on where. The entrance is gonna be or how wide are the turn lanes, so that would still exist. We give us, uh basically, we're trying to finish our reviews within two to three weeks of application, that's a goal. Right now, I would say our current engineer is not meeting that requirement. The last two reviews they did for Cedar Ridge, they did, but prior to that. So it's, it's an effort that we have to work on to get them into that cycle. The um actions, we identify any variances that would need to be approved. And highlighted there in yellow under fourteen-four-five F. Upon approval of preliminary plat, and this is one of those for discussion, the directors of that may shall sign and date the certificate. That's what we're doing now, is sort of a delegation from council down to staff, we would like to keep it that way. But that is an item for consideration if you wanted to change that at this point. Um then we go in the next section, how do they go about if they wanna change or amend the preliminary plat? Uh now we change into minor land development permits, so we actually define uh minor. So a minor land development permit may be required for small projects that would otherwise, otherwise not require a land development permit or preliminary plat. So we're talking small acreage, this limited number of developments. So for multifamily, non-resi- pro- residential properties, this may include, but it's not limited to items such as a minor tree remove, removal, clearing, grubbing. Grading, landscaping, small driveway, parking installations, and small building additions. For single-family pro- residential properties, this may include, but it's not limited to parking, patios, walkways, retaining wall additions as determined. So we're saying some of those wouldn't necessarily trigger a full-blown review. So we go through the general pla- planning requirement for them, the review permits and. And this is some of the agencies that would, like we just talked about under nine, uh there's another typo, fourteen-six-three. Is um. Who gets to review the permit applications, obviously us, but we both in here, but the public works. Uh utilities, public utilities, so wastewater, water and wastewater. And in both of our cases, it may be banks or whole county public works, banks or whole county planning department, depending on where it's located. The banks or whole county fire marshal, the, what's not in here is the banks or whole county environmental health, uh Georgia G dot. So we're just listing other agencies. So now fourteen-seven gets into the land development permit. So we define it. A land development permit shall not be required for one detached fee simple, single-family dwelling and two family dwelling duplexes. If all we're doing is one on an existing lot. All other forms of residential development, including but not limited to detached, single-family dwellings and attached dwellings and condominiums. Town homes and a partner shall require land development permits, so the type of plans required. And this may not be inclusive, but it should be pretty much all of them, erosion, sedimentation control plans, tree plans, stormwater management report, street improvement plan. Any structural buffer plans, flood plain permits, if we're getting into those, domestic water supply plans, uh which would also include um. The previous section, which is sewage disposal plans, so whether they're putting in infrastructure for the city to be dedicated to the city or septic. Uh the how we're getting the water to the project, whether they're drilling a well to meet their requirements. And dedicating the well system to the city. Uh grading, grading plans and site design review, so dimensional requirements of lots and how they flow. Uh obviously, they have to be prepared by a professional, so civil design and construction plans. We require, we're gonna require separate requirements for phased applications, so unless they submit everything up front. Each phase will have to have a full set of that. I would tell you Moss Farms that their entire landscaping and buffer areas up front as part of the initial plan, so. Uh relationship of permit to plant approval, general applications. Okay, fourteen-seven-seven, general specifications for drawings, we talk about what size. And what contour intervals we want in there, you can see a lot of ours are gonna be at the one or two feet intervals. So it um. So we're trying to address specifically stormwater, how things flow in that requirement. So you, you have the list right there, it goes through J. As far as the different things we wanna see on the general specifications. Um fourteen-seven-eight, uh erosion, sedimentation, containment control. Uh we discussed a lot of that up front in the initial meetings, because we do have erosion, sedimentation control ordinances. So we're incorporating this, them into this document. But basically, this is basically giving you what we wanna see on those plans. Uh fourteen-seven-nine looks at the specifications for tree plans, what we wanna see on those, on those plans. And if you remember, that's another section that we talked about early on in the discussion. And maybe, and maybe prior to some of you being on the planning commission. But we do have a tree ordinance requirement, so we incorporated that into this document also. But once again, it lists the basic areas and the safe areas and how you apply that. Fourteen-seven-ten, uh stormwater, so we're referring you back to, to a later section. Fourteen-seven-eleven is uh street improvements, which is also in a later section. So in four, fourteen-nine and fourteen-ten. So we're getting in, into those, the specifications for structural plans, flood plain permits. Anything where they're gonna encroach into the flood plains. While we may review it, the approving authority is gonna be some division of EPD or a designated. Um administration, once again. Basically, you're looking at senior staff level doing that, the review of the applications, you, it gets broader. So you see more people in there. So once again, where does, G dot, the D N R, EPD, depending on the stream, it could be the Corps of Engineers or EPA. So we, how we do our review of erosion plans, action on permit applications, basically talking once again about timing and how we get through it. And then fourteen-seven-eighteen, we talk about permits for annex lands. So if they're trying to be, what's the term I'm looking for, aggressive. It sort of sets the boundaries of when we would start review with the annexations, so. So even though we may have reviewed their plans, we could not issue the permits until the annexation was completed, is what we're saying there. And the one that jumps out to me that you guys will have next month will be the annexation that the Rose brothers submitted on Julian Ball. They're currently getting ready to submit the architectural plans and the land, land plans. So they can be under review versus waiting till the annexation's been approved and then starting review. It's just trying to save them time to, till they can get onto construction. Responsibilities, bonds. Um so we, we talk about if they don't meet their requirements, how we can. Make them put up bonds for work if they've been in violation for two or more times. We actually put a time limit on land development permits, basically one year. So that's something right now, some of ours have lingered a long time. I would say Cedar Ridge in its original form, back in the early two thousands, when it was a ma- it was supposed to be a manufactured home subdivision. Has been hanging on that long, we may have go back and do amendments and changes. But some of the basic concepts have been around that period of time, so we're trying to. If you're gonna submit, we expect you to be under development, not just to sit on the property. Fourteen-eight, we talk about uh improvements, so survey monumentation that we talked about earlier. Wayne is in fourteen-eight-two. Fourteen-eight-three, we start talking about the, the streets in generalities. So streets in non-residential areas or serving a multifamily development shall be improved to collector's street standards. And residential subdivision streets that serve one hundred dwelling units or more shall be improved to collector's street standards. So we're saying they're not, they may be used residentially, but they're getting enough that they should be upgraded in their design to collector's streets, not to local streets. Let me participate in sharing costs, um items C there. Where we may put, the city may participate in sharing costs of construction installation to the extent that improvements are needed to bring existing public streets. To a higher level classification they required exclusively. So if we see where the typical one that you would see. If, if we wanted Moss Farms to carry a lane back up into, up Athens Street into town to Napoli's. That would be an onsite improvement, we would participate in that versus the turn lane, which is their cost, the turn lanes. So if there's something exterior to the property that we're requiring, we could participate in the cost. Um so we talk about public water, fire hydrants, once again, basically, we say city fire department, that means for us. Whole County Fire Department, uh we talk about sanitary sewer and it being reviewed uh later on in chapter fourteen-eleven. Uh how to go about design variances. And so then we talk about streets in themselves for access. So every development and every lot within a subdivision shall be served by a public street, meeting the requirements of this chapter, or an improved private street. Every development and every subdivision shall have access to a public street system via paved road, so not gravel or dirt. When land is subdiv- subdivided in larger parcels than ordinary building lots, such parcels shall be arranged and designed to allow for the opening of future streets. To provide access to those areas not presently served by the streets. So if you're just trying to get two acres up front, but it's out of a forty-acre parcel. Right, we're telling you upfront, you need to show where, how you're gonna get access to the remainder of the parcels. So when something happens in the future, it's already leased on a plat somewhere. Future use of the track, street names, so we talk about the street names and the use of. Uh the suffixes, avenue, boulevard, drive, place, way, courts and other designations. We have some interesting choices, we really shouldn't have any avenues, I think the closest thing we have to the avenue is Main Street. So that does matter. So we talk about uh street intersections, so if you're coming out and there's another street that we're asking you to align your plans. To the existing sites, existing uses. Uh fourteen-nine-nine, we're talking about right-ofways, so it's not to scale, but we are talking about. Looking at it as a whole and where the utility should be, what the, the basic slope should be, our sidewalks. So hopefully, everybody likes the sidewalks they're going in right now. Question was, why are that, that wide, because they're multi-use to go between the depot and the parks? So standard, most of our sidewalks in town are four feet, they do not comply with ADA requirements, which is a minimum of five. So our typical sidewalk, sub- sidewalks in new subdivisions would be five. So the eight feet is just to have a, a good access point for bicycles, roller skates, walking, jogging. And getting between the, like I said, the depot downtown and the parks, that's why they're eight. So we talk about that there, the next section, uh table fourteen-nine-one. So we talk about the de- definitions of arterial streets, so where the requirements would come from, what collector's streets should be, local streets and alleys. And as we get to smaller lots and talking about smaller lots. The discussion of alleyways becomes more critical, it's an added cost to the developer, but. To have adequate parking and access to parking, we need to be looking at alleyways and rear entrances and stuff. I know a lot of developers don't like that, but it's a trade-off for the smaller lots, so. The discussions, but you have all the requirements and pavement width. So at fourteen-nine-ten, we do talk about having a permanent perpetual easement to the city outside of the right-ofway, so in the lots. Along both sides of all collectors and local streets, so that's a. Putting it out there that we have place to work if we need to in line expansion. We talk about pavement whis, you see those there, uh streak grades, you also see those there. Uh fourteen-nine-dash-thirteen, you start talking about your grading, uh full width, um clearing, slopes and shoulders, protection of the banks. On any creeks, insulation of utilities when they come along, preparation of the subgrade, how they should be, what tests we're gonna use and right now. And I think the engineers have agreed to this one, the nineteen, ninety-five percent density. So and that's probably need to change that to, to the Proctor scale, but as defined. Fourteen-nine-one also talks about minimum site distances at intersections, your horizontal alignment, your curb. So all of that, we, we talk about dead-end streets and cul-de-sacking them. And how many homes can be on there, so we're talking about that, we're talking about temporary turnarounds, if we're talking about the phasing and it continues on. We get into the street base uh requirements, um one of the things there on the top of one-ninety-one is soil cement base. Shall be a minimum of ten percent Portland cement by volume. We actually just did one of these, that's on the secondary entrance to Moss Farms, which is. Carter Street, Carter's, Carter Street, the, the, the contention to get the compaction and everything. We had to go with a, a cement, soil cement base mix. So the, the testing on it, we're talking about that the street base actually goes under the. Culvert, not culvert, it's the um. The gut- the carbon gutter, so it doesn't end where the carbon gutter starts, it goes all the way through. Uh we talk about testing requirements and when they would occur. Uh, we talk about testing requirements and when they would occur. We actually talk on my, fourteen, nine, twenty-three, we talk about the. Type of carbon gutter that we want. We talk about turning lanes and the holding distance on there. Um, one of the things I have highlighted on one ninety-two. The street name, the street name signs of a type approved by the city shall appear on all intersections. Traffic control signs shall be placed by the city and conform to the US. And the reason that's highlighted, I think the discussion is if we're talking subdivision. And it's internal subdivision, that should be provided by the developer, not by the city, the initial, follow-on ones, probably so. But the initial one, so that, for my part, needs some clarification. Uh, the next section deals with sidewalks, once again, you see that at the top of one ninety-three. What we're looking for in slopes, once again, take into consideration, especially as you look at the new sidewalks. There are areas where the slope, the existing slope doesn't allow you to fully do that, that's why you have some of those small. Short little support walls to hold the ground back. So as much as possible, that's what we're looking to do. We're talking, we're actually specifying now where the utility should go. In the back or parts of the rightaway and how far back from the curb pavement and how, how deep. That is, uh, becoming more critical. Our dear friends at Comcast managed to break our water lines at East Wind three times when they were, uh, two weeks ago? Your first week. When they were trying to put in new fiber optic despite things being located, so. They, so it becomes important where we say things should be, so we have less of that opportunity happening. Um, so on one ninety-four, you have a better picture of how that fits and what we're saying from the previous page of wording. Uh, we talk about pavement cuts, what type of, um. What kind of repair is required when we do curb cuts, what kind of materials, what size. On section fourteen, nine, twenty-nine, we get into street lighting. And we've talked about lighting before, uh, being downward casted and not spread out. So the, um, candle footlights basically between commercial, intermediate areas and residential. And the type of street, so that, and Georgia Power and Jackson EMC. Our, our folks are mostly Georgia Power, but they work very well together, they have these requirements, so. Working with the developer, the civil engineer, they'll make sure those foot candles are met and we'll get a copy of the report. The, um, fourteen, nine, thirty, street trees, so we're getting back into the street design. They're very bri- uh, this is just telling us how and where they should be. So look at that section at the bottom of one ninety-six, if you have a different thought, please let me know. So we're saying, if you're gonna dunk, in lack of a better example, right now is Main Street. The tree, the big tree on right side has been hit by lightning. Little less than three thousand to take it down the rest of the way. That's probably not the best sized tree to be planting today, I understand it was planted a hundred years ago, got that, but. If we're looking at trees and type of trees, it should be. Size to the neighborhood size, so that when something does happen, it doesn't do damage to adjacent houses. So that's what that is, that chart's getting to. Uh, fourteen dash ten, I'll try to cut in ten minutes and run. Um, we, we're talking about if you want a private street sub-development. You still have requirements, you can't just do what you want. You can have the private street, but you're still gonna meet the design requirements and signing off easements and utilities. Because we're still gonna run waters, sewer in there and others. So basically, what's, what blo- signature blocks need to be on the plat to address that? To, so that everybody that's buying in there understand it's a private street and not a public street and. When something goes wrong, it's on the HOA, not on the city to make repairs. Uh, we do allow gated communities, once again, fourteen, ten, dash nine addresses that and what's needed. And I think that's a good place to stop. You guys got any questions, I went through that, I tried to do it quick, there's a lot of material in that's, in that stuff. But like I said, like I told you every time, I really need feedback, so if there's something you like, or something you absolutely hate, but you know. Like I said, it's not my document, it's our document, and we're trying to get the best at the end of the day for our community. Any specific questions of what we went through?
I encourage y'all to think about on the private streets, because I see both sides of that, and my experience with local governments is. If you approve a private street, the idea is, well, we're gonna save the public money. But I guarantee you somewhere down the road, they'll be hoping to pay you and say, well, I pay tax or I support the city, whatever it is. And you got fixed for a street, and I understand there, that's an expense, but really.
And examples of that is. Brookside, Victoria Lane by a stretch, um. Witherford subdivision, so those are all, so ye- yes, do look at that and. You don't have to permit it, we don't, but most places do, that's why it's in there for consideration, so.
Not to investigate the community, that's one, if you're gonna make it, if it's gonna be dated, you know, it can't be a public, it's not a public. I would, I would like to add, we're talking about gated, but also like downtown areas. Uh, and I, I bring that up about the trees. Clarksville, if you go through downtown Clarksville, they got those big beautiful oak trees. Well, now they're starting to break and come down, just like this one did. So they're having to go back and address what kind of orbits they need to create to address that, to keep the trees off the road lanes. So the tree part is pretty important as well, where you'll have damage to sidewalks, roads and homes, utilities.
Wayne, it's yours.
Oh, that's a good point, Jerry's making up the trees on the sidewalk, in the little grassy area between the sidewalk and the street. I mean, not only the tree size, you got hurdle gutter problems and utility problems. That's all I know.
I make a motion to the jury.
So you have a motion to the jury?
Here in seventy.
All I think is that.
Yes.
Just that front part, is that all you really need, the front page? Because these are the things, I really didn't know what to do on that. I got one question for you too, uh, on the dates for this October bill. Is it possible, I mean, he said it, I'm gonna be back late in town, right now. Can I attend that, the next day and hit me, or do I need to?
Yeah, I like that. They put me in the south, for instance, and I love that. Yeah, you'll be, they put me in the south, all traffic to this.
He makes well of that, uh, in the.
You don't know what you're coming back to.